Okay, I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting of January eighth. You have before you an agenda, can I have a motion approved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to the presentation of the town of Nantucket budget. And Libby Gibson and Brian Turbit. And the committee may want to go down here. Although is everything in this, Libby?
That's the narrative, the budget message. And it is mostly in there, but this is just.
Okay. Okay.
I realize this is a speaker for the TV, not everybody, so hopefully I will speak loud enough. If I'm not speaking loud enough, please do not hesitate to let me know. I'm Libby Gibson, town manager, this is Brian Turbit, our director of municipal finance. We gave this budget presentation for the fiscal twenty general fund to the select board on December nineteenth. Normally, when we come to you, we come to you the week following the select board meeting. However, this year, we were a bit delayed in the select board presentation because of a lot of other priority issues that were happening on our end. So, we were a bit late with the board, and then the following week was Christmas, and the following week was, anyway. So, we're here now. As a result, though, we didn't, we usually compress our presentation a little bit for you, and sort of customize it more for the school committee, and we did not have a chance to do that. So, there may be some extra slides in here that we'll try to skip through because they're probably not pertinent to you, although if you're interested, we are more than happy to take you through them. Just a little bit of a brief intro here. Section four point two D three of the town charter requires the town manager to prepare and submit to the select board an annual operating budget. I think you have two documents in the packet that we provided you. This PowerPoint and a draft budget message, which we are in the process of finalizing. It will be finalized following a public hearing that the select board will have tomorrow night on the budget, and maybe some additional input from the finance committee. But that budget message will eventually be finalized. We also have a list of requested and recommended expense increase items from the town departments. Not sure that's in your packet, but if anybody would like a copy of it, we're happy to provide it. It was in our packet on December nineteenth, so it is on the town website. Our fiscal twenty budget process began with the issuance of budget instructions on September twenty fourth, twenty sixth. A review of preliminary projected expenses and revenues with the select board happened on October second, and a review of every departmental budget, including the school budget, from mid-October through early December took place with town admin staff. Our budget objectives for fiscal twenty are to keep the operating budget within projected revenue. However, we do have a recommendation of sorts regarding a general fund override that is being sort of discussed internally, which we will get to shortly. Our budget objectives address legal mandates, it addresses needs we have seen expressed through the board and/or administration operations, with the highest priority being the select board strategic plan, a staffing study that we finalized in December, actually in November, and town operations specific to public safety and administration. We hope to be able to maintain flexibility with the levy limit and use of free cash with the budget. In other words, we're trying not to spend every bit of projected revenue. This is going to be very difficult because of some issues we're facing with our enterprise funds. This is a list here of the initiatives specific to the strategic plan and the staffing study that I mentioned that are recommended in the budget. They're just shown here, I won't go through them all. Of course, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. There are a number of actions that we take on an ongoing basis to reduce expenses and increase efficiency and transparency. They're listed here, I'm sure the school goes through something very similar. Additionally, we have applied for and received approval for two compact community grants, and we intend to seek a grant for sustainability plan. You're all probably not familiar with the compact community grant, but it is a program for municipalities through the governor's office that allows towns to do particular sort of best management practices that become, that the state will pay a consultant for you to hire to do a particular study on something. For example, we've done one so far. We hired a consultant to overhaul our financial management policies a couple of years ago. Those go on the state website, and other towns that want to update their financial management policies can go look at samples. That's the point of it. Brian is going to take us through slides five through twelve, well, not the even numbers, but the next few slides.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you about the general fund budget. So, we, as I mentioned to the select board, we've hit a milestone. We're projecting over one hundred million dollars in revenue in the town, one hundred and one, four seventy six, five fifty eight, to be exact. We've projected expenses of one hundred and one million, four seventy four, two thirty six, which right now leaves us dangerously close to the levy limit with only two thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars in unused levy capacity, which is, at this juncture, the closest we've ever been in my tenure. The next slide is a comparison from the presentation for nineteen from last year to this year. You'll see that we're estimating or projecting to raise eighty-five million dollars, a little over eighty-five million dollars in real and personal property taxes. Motor vehicle excise, rooms and meals, licenses, permits, and other receipts make up about just over ten and a half million. State aid, the number that we've projected for fiscal twenty twenty is three point eight million dollars, which I will let you know is the exact cherry sheet number for this year. The governor's budget is not released until January twenty-third, so I do know that there's been talk that he may make some proposed changes to various things. But since we have no idea how or what those impacts will be, we have not programmed any increases to state aid at this point. There's also eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in free cash for one-time expenses programmed in. The bottom of this slide just shows the various breakdown of municipal departments totaling the one hundred and one million dollars. This next slide here is a breakdown showing that, as we've stated before, we generate approximately eighty-five percent of all the revenue the town brings in through tax, being real and personal property. State aid is about four percent, rooms and meals also brings in approximately four percent, with motor vehicles and local, other local estimated receipts bringing in three percent each. This is a breakdown on a chart to show the, how the first, the budget lines on the first slide there are broken down between municipal, school department, non-departmental, and special appropriations. Special appropriations are where the majority of that is where the transfers to the enterprise funds lead, live, and non-departmental is essentially all of our insurances, debt service, and things of that nature. Which I will note, one thing with relative to the budget this year, there was a substantial increase in the amount of debt that the town has actually permanently bonded last year. The majority of it is debt excluded, which is the first time that people will feel the impacts for the Nantucket Harbor Shimo Sewer Project, which was voted to be put on the tax base, as well as the new fire station. So, some of the general fund budget expense categories, we're proposing eight million dollars in town operational expenses. Within that, one million, forty-eight thousand is in expense increase requests. We're proposing twenty-one million, one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in salaries. Within that is six hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in new expense increase requests relative to salaries, which those do tie to the, not only the strategic plan, but to the staffing study that the town has recently conducted and was presented to the select board. For the school, we're proposing five point two million dollars in operational expenses. Included in that is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in increase, as well as twenty-four point nine million dollars in salary with a five hundred and forty thousand dollar increase in personnel or new positions there, which is in direct discussions with the, with school administration. Health insurance, we are projecting an eleven percent increase, and that is actually over the rate. It's not over the actual budgeted number because last year, when we made the plan design changes, we were not able to actually accrue the benefits in the budget because they hadn't been made at the time that we had done the budget. So, this eleven percent increase is actually on the actual rate itself. Medical rate inflation right now is still running at about eight and a half percent, and we are still trending a little bit higher than that. We speak, do speak to our insurance advisor on a pretty much weekly or every other week basis as the claims get updated to determine whether or not this needs to stay, hopefully does not need to increase, but whether there's any room for movement on a downward basis here. At a call today with general insurance, we're still projecting a ten percent rate increase there as well. Debt service is nine point seven million, which is two and a half million dollars more than last year as discussed for two of the large-scale projects that we have permanently bonded. Retirement is projected at four point seven million dollars, which is consistent with the eight and a half percent we've been seeing on a year-over-year basis. And enterprise fund subsidies are eight point nine million dollars, which is an eight percent increase over last year. We'll talk more about this in a slide relative to free cash, but there are, we're experiencing some potential difficult issues relative to the amount of money that the enterprise funds, specifically our island home and the solid waste, are bringing in, and the need to cover higher costs within those two funds themselves. Some of the special appropriations, we're projecting no change to health and human services. We funded last year four hundred and fifty thousand. The county assessment, we've made a recommendation to maintain at the one hundred and seventy thousand. Reserve fund, unpaid bills, and other post-employment benefits, we have made no recommended changes to those numbers from the prior year. We do not envision any overlay or any other deficits that we would be required to raise on the recap sheet at this point in time. We are projecting a two and a half percent increase in the cherry sheet charges, which is consistent with what we've been, where we've been. That is primarily related to the NRTA. And as a note, this is not going to impact us in fiscal twenty, but the decision by everyone to extend service for the NRTA to year-round will have a substantial increase in the cherry sheet offsets next year. The initial projections are that our cherry sheet offset charges could increase by over three hundred thousand dollars, which will have an impact on us. It has been something that both the town manager and myself have discussed with the select board, so everyone is aware of it. School administration had requested an additional fifty thousand dollar transfer for community school, which we have budgeted and factored into this particular, into this budget recommendation. And minimum capital funding, which is one percent of prior revenue, low cost estimated receipts, and real and personal property taxes generates nine hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. Bringing us to the total budget recommendation of one hundred, one million, four hundred and thirty-four thousand. So, during the budget process, departments on the town side submitted six point two million dollars worth of requests. As you'll note, down below underneath the recommendations, there's a three million dollar recommendation to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. There's one million, three thousand in one-time expense increase requests recommended, and ongoing is one million, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Funded through tax levy, budget adjustments, potential other funding sources, free cash, and any revenue increases that we may recommend.
With regard to the expense increase requests, I'm sure you all use some kind of criteria for your expense increase requests. And the way we have done it is that recommendations for our expense increase requests are based on the following criteria. Legal mandates are recommended, high prioritization is given for requests that support the board's strategic plan and/or are recommended in our staffing study, improvement to departmental efficiencies and operations, items necessary to support new programming, existing programming, or continuity of operations. Each EIR is ranked using a point system. Recommended EIRs are shown on this slide. Highlighted items are directly related to the strategic plan. Overall, our recommendations on the town side include nine new positions, several legal mandates, funding for strategic planning initiatives and facilitation, project management support, maintenance budget increases for vehicles and equipment, vehicles and equipment replacements, and some operational increases related to training, safety, IT improvements, and various contractual increases. As I mentioned earlier, the requested and recommended EIRs are contained on a separate spreadsheet. It's online, we're not intending to go through that tonight. If you have questions, we're happy to answer them.
So, to fund the recommended five point one million dollars, we're proposing one million, seventy-six thousand come from tax levy and other general revenues, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand in free cash, which is, and all of the free cash is used for one-time events or one-time funding needs consistent with the free cash policy. And other funds in the amount of three million, one hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred dollars broken down from the ambulance reserve fund, the beach improvement revolver, Cape and Islands license plate funds, up to fifty thousand. And we're recommending, and in discussions with the CPC, for them to leverage their borrowing authority under their statute, under their enabling legislation, to borrow three million dollars, which would be the recommended funding that the select board voted to give to the Affordable Housing Trust. We're in discussions with CPC, and I have a meeting to go to on Tuesday, which hopefully will be positive and successful. So, to give everyone a breakdown of the free cash, we had certified nine point five million dollars. We've recommended eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to be used for one-time expense increase requests. Funded school and town capital projects, we've recommended five million dollars. Due to the timing of some of the permanent debt that was issued by the Clean Water Trust, there's three hundred thousand dollars that we actually have to fund from other available sources under than, other than, excuse me, the tax levy this year, or for, in fiscal nineteen, because of the fact that we didn't have the required quorum at the special town meeting for appropriations, we could not fund that through the budget and raise it in the tax rate, so we have to find alternate sources to fund that in nineteen. It is allocated in the budget for twenty. There's a very large number of three point four million dollars in unallocated free cash, and this goes to the fact that during the tax rate setting process for fiscal nineteen, we cannot raise user charges in enterprise funds above what they collected in the prior year. And with both island home and solid waste, there was a need to try to raise user fees above what we collected in the prior year. It took an extremely lot of work to get DOR to buy off on the plan, or the, how we were going to do it, and the discussion with them. So, the other commitment that we made was that if they began to look like they were going to incur revenue deficits, and what happens if an enterprise fund, specifically those two that we fund, happened to have a revenue deficit, then we would be obligated to fund it on the recap sheet, which would mean if we did not have the available levy capacity, that we'd have to have a special town meeting to make changes to a budget to be able to do this. So, we have, we are withhold, we are holding back three point four million dollars as we continue to review those two operations in the event that we have to make a transfer into those enterprise funds to close fiscal nineteen. What this also means is that we, even though we have them balanced at this point based on the budget recommendations, if there's a significant change in the user fees that are being collected by either of those enterprises, then we will now have a subsequent problem in fiscal twenty that we have begun discussions with the select board and have made some recommendations on the consideration of specifically related to our island home, a potential override to fund that, to fund that subsidy itself. Those are still ongoing, and hopefully will bear some, some positive results.
Outstanding items and current unknowns are shown on this slide. Strategic plan and staffing study contain items that will span several years. Those, both of those items are likely to be updated annually or on some regular basis, and will be used as one of our tools for prioritizing future budget requests. We are in the process of updating our five-year budget forecast. Brian mentioned the potential targeted override for large enterprise fund expenses that are currently contained within the general fund. Funding those expenses through an override or other funding sources, reliable funding sources, could allow for more flexibility in the general fund, and not necessarily even for spending, but for flexibility purposes. We are not sure what is going to happen economically, nationwide, locally, regionally, in the coming years. The general fund, pressure on the general fund has not been as serious as it's becoming because of retained earnings that we've had in the enterprise funds previously, but those retained earnings have dwindled to the point where it's a serious concern now going forward to cover those items in the general fund. And as Brian mentioned, we have a large new expense coming in fiscal twenty-one for the year-round NRTA service. State aid is always a bit of a concern. Lately, it's been a bit higher than projected. Harbor Place is a town-side issue that is somewhat of an unknown at this point. There are a number of citizen warrant articles that have been submitted for the twenty nineteen annual town meeting. None of them are factored in here. Some of them have a specific dollar amount associated with them. Others do not specify a dollar amount, but if approved, will cost in excess of potentially several hundred thousand dollars that money would have to be found for. There is a open space and recreation plan, and also a parks master plan. Both of those are underway, they could have an impact on the general fund in future years. We do have some new potential revenue options, both property tax and non-property tax-based that could potentially offset some of these new costs. I'm sure some of you at least have heard about the short-term rental bill. That is something that we are going to be having some discussion about at our meeting tomorrow night, but there are a lot of dynamic moving parts with that legislation right at the moment that have not been really locked into place at all. Additionally, we don't really show it here, but without a municipal facilities master plan, maintenance and operational costs are going to continue on the town side, since we have, our town departments are spread out in a lot of buildings that require a lot of maintenance and repair. Our next steps are shown here. Pretty much, we are reviewing our recommended budget with you tonight. We have our public hearing that I mentioned tomorrow night. After that, the finance committee will begin reviewing budget requests with the departments, the school, and the other financial appropriations, and we end up on Monday, April first, at the twenty nineteen annual town meeting. The rest of our slides are pretty much just exhibits that show historical numbers and breakdowns. We're happy to take you through it, but unless you have specific questions, we won't.
What about the airport enterprise fund?
The airport.
Specifically, what about it?
Well, it seemed like the waste management and the island home were leaving propositions, but what about the airport?
Airport is, has been moving for the last few years in a very positive direction, and has not needed a subsidy or had to even contemplate asking the town for any subsidy for their operations. As a matter of fact, they actually have started, they have a payback agreement that they've started with relative to the money that town meeting had funded over a couple of town meetings. So, they are on, they're on better footing than they have been in the past, I'll say it that way. That answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Questions?
Yes.
Go up there and we can, do you have any other presentations?
No, but there is something that we are, we wanted to just mention to you that is not resolved at the moment, but we are in the process of trying to get it resolved. There's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted currently for landfill mining. We've had that budgeted for several years now. We are in the process of determining whether or not the mining program is going to continue. Our DEP permit for it expires at the end of June, and we may be going in a different direction with that program. If we do, it, there is a potential for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be, I hesitate to use the word available, but it, but it might be. And that is something that we can discuss with the superintendent if and when that comes to fruition. There may be some additional funds that could be allocated on the town and/or school side. But as Brian mentioned, the levy limit closeness of, you know, less than, just around a couple thousand dollars is very alarming and concerning to us, so we don't want to get too carried away with.
Libby, when do you think that would be resolved? Can you give a timeframe at all?
I would say before the finance committee makes its recommendations, which will be early March. So, we, I mean, we're hoping to get it resolved sooner rather than later, but it's a complex issue, and there are some additional discussions we need to finish up on the town side.
Yeah, I wondered, and please don't misunderstand, I don't begrudge the other departments their increases, but given that revenues overall are up seven point three percent, and the other departments are getting seven point seven percent, how do you settle on four point seven percent for the school?
Well, we had discussions with the superintendent, and our requests totaled over five million dollars. As we understand it, the school came to us with around one point eight-ish, and of that, I think we were able to allocate around one point four. So, I think we thought we did pretty well in trying to accommodate your request. We weren't not accommodating all of ours either. As I mentioned, though, we are trying to focus on strategic plan initiatives, a staffing study, and general items that improve overall town government operations, which also can benefit the school.
Did the one point eight-ish include the roll forward of seven hundred something?
Yes.
Wow, you're musing. Is there any?
I'm good, thank you.
I just have a question regarding, you mentioned in your budget that you had nine new hires going into this, this new budget. Remind me where we stand with the health insurance. For the school, we have a projection of X amount of new hires. Is that still coming out of the same fund as it's always done before? It's not going to have an impact on the school budget?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
No questions, thank you, good presentations.
Steve? I, my additional words would be comments rather than questions, and I think those are for us to discuss.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Pardon?
Trying to be a little nicer than Captain.
Okay. Esports initiative.
So, the people can hear, or you can be at the microphone, or do you prefer? Whatever you like. Okay, so, this is a little handout for you, the first page, I'm not going to go through anything, everything I should say unless you like me to, but the first page is kind of an overview of the game club in general, because the esports falls underneath that, that club. Tells you where it was founded, and who did it, and the focus, and all these things. Community service, which I'm very proud of these kids, over the last year and a half, for instance, just the one thing I do want to point out that they've raised almost five hundred dollars for Boston Children's Hospital through Extra Life, which is a group of gamers who spend a day in the fall and a day in the spring playing games and raising money. So, that's kind of neat. And then we also have, are starting this Thursday, an initiative through the community school, starting a game club at the elementary school. There's actually talk of potentially one at the middle school, too, that's the high school kids would be kind of helping to set those things up, so you can see what that's doing on. And then the second page and the third page are the esports initiatives. We have two major esports initiatives that we're doing. For those of you who don't know what esports are, it stands for electronic sports. It's pretty much online gaming, competitive online gaming. It's very big at the college level. There are professional leagues, there are colleges that are offering full scholarships to the universities and colleges for kids who are really good at esports gaming. And it's targeting primarily a group of kids that have kind of been lost in the shuffle, I guess you could say, in high school. These are mostly kids who don't play sports, they go home right after school when they jump on their computer and play games. Now, we're keeping them here, and they're playing the games. In fact, they're, we have one team that is currently ranked seventh in the state, who's in the second round of the playoffs right now down the hall, playing against somebody. So, hopefully, it's going well right now. So, the two major kind of initiatives here, the first one is, it's listed here, it's called Play Versus. The state of Massachusetts, through the Principals Association, has officially made esports an activity for high schools. And Play Versus is the organization that is running the league. And Play Versus is the organization that is running the league that is being played right now. They're actually playing a game called League of Legends, it's a five-on-five game, so about a strategy, a lot of communication between the players. They're gonna have two seasons during the year, they run kind of fall-winter, which is the one we're in right now, and then they're gonna have one that runs kind of winter-spring. I don't know if they're gonna do the same game or another game, but they're gonna be continuing those things going on. So that's really exciting, because it gives the kids a chance to play some competitive games against other high schools around the state. And what's great about it for Niantucket, which is why I'm really excited about esports, is because there's no travel involved unless you get it maybe to the finals. So all twelve are the matches that they played in the regular season, and the first round of the playoffs, which is going on today. We're playing here, and we're playing, we're playing Walpole right now, so their high school kids are at their high school, playing right now against us online. So, for an island that has travel problems, especially in winter, esports is a great activity for these kids to get involved in. So it's kinda neat along those lines. And then the last page, or the second and last page I should say, talks about TESPA, which I can officially talk about today, they gave me permission to talk about it. TESPA initially stood for the Texas Esports Association, there was a couple of college kids back in the day who were playing online games, and they started to create some competitions amongst themselves at their college. And then it spread over the next couple of years to other colleges in Texas. And then when they were getting ready to graduate, Blizzard Entertainment, the people who bring you World of Warcraft and Overwatch, if you had kids, they probably played these games, and Hot Stones and things like that. They invited those kids to come to Irvine, California to be a part of Blizzard Entertainment. And they run a very massive college program through esports. And they are looking to get into the high schools, so last fall, they invited fifteen game club advisors from around the country. They only chose fifteen, and we were one of the lucky fifteen that they chose from the country. And they flew all the advisors out to Irvine, California for kind of a roundtable discussion all day long about esports and the future of them. And they're gonna be rolling that out in January nationally. So we've been a part of kind of the initial run of that in the fall and early winter here, getting that up and running, and giving them suggestions on what they should be doing and how they should be doing it. Play Versus is more in tune to like running competitions for the high school. TESPA is more involved in kind of growing the community, as it says here, some of the mission statements and core values. They're gonna be making connections with high schools and colleges, they're gonna be giving kids prizes for grade point averages and community service. They're gonna be working on getting kids to behave better online, things like that, some of the bullying issues you may have heard in the past, they're very big into trying to combat that, especially against female players. So they're really big into all those things going on here. And then the last page just talks about some of the online games that the kids either are playing or will be playing probably through either Play Versus or TESPA. And just a quick little kind of a overview of each one, so you get a sense of what they are, so. If you have any questions about either the game club or esports, very happy to answer.
Henry?
No, I love to see it, it's very refreshing. I feel like for a very, a very long time, a lot of people's high school experiences have been defined by how fast they can run or how high they can jump. And I think it's refreshing to see another thing that kids can do and feel good about.
Steve?
Yeah, who's monitoring, supervising, organizing, et cetera?
Here at the high school?
Yeah.
That'd be me.
Just you?
Just me right now.
All this?
Yeah. I, I love getting myself-
Ken?
No, this is the first time I'm able to look at this, so I'd love to review it, and I'll, I'll come to you if I have questions.
Definitely.
Pauline?
Thank you.
I think this is so exciting, and I think we're lucky to have you take, pick this up and help our kids. John and I were at the Niantucket project, Peter and I were at the project, and they had somebody come and present this year on e-gaming. And it opened my eyes up to see no ma- just the amount of money some of these students were making with e-games. And also just the community, the camaraderie, the teamship, everything that it was taking a population of kids that you might necessarily think they're in their bedrooms alone on their, on their computers, but it was actually far from it. It's actually bringing the community together, and I think it's great to find this, this niche for these students. Personally, my brother is a retired detective from Scotland Yard, he's a forensic scientist, we met him. And he's been playing online games with people all over the world for years, it's his way of coming down, he is far from antisocial. But he has people now all over the world that they get together every year, and it's really sort of formed a very strong friendship over the last fifteen years. So, and they all met online, which is, it's kind of of all different ages. So I think it's great, and again, thank you for bringing this to our community, because I think it's gonna be something that's really rewarding for the students participating.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, when I was out in California talking to them, somebody was talking about how, you know, their kids are like islands in their schools. And when it finally got around to me on the table, like, you know, we are an island. If esports was designed for any high school in the world, Niantucket is certainly one of them. And I think, you know, the connection, we already have one student who's a senior, who's down playing right now, who's already reached out to the college that he thinks he's gonna be going to, and the esports program that's there, and the kid there's already reached back to him. So he's already making a connection at that level, and I think we can see more of that if we continue to grow. We have ten students right now down there playing, so it's kinda neat to see that happening, so.
And I think it helps them with critical thinking and planning and I mean-
Yeah, 'cause all the games, I mean, the, the controversy is the first-person shooter stuff, right? It's, that's the, that's where people get nervous when we talk about, you know, online gaming and stuff like that. The, the games that, that we're playing and the games that, that I'm assuming Play Versus and the high school principal association will be kind of like okaying, are, you know, very unrealistic when it comes to like the violence and, and, and the graphics and what's going on, it's a lot of magical stuff and spells. But, so, a lot of that stuff is, is removed from the games that we play. But it is, it's very high in strategy and talking, I listen to them while they're talking down there, and it's amazing, the, the amount of talking that goes on down there is, is more than you'd hear like on a basketball court or football field or things like that. I mean, the, the instinct decisions that they have to make and have to be coordinated with each other, it's, it's pretty amazing what they have to do, so. And there's a lot of jobs even in the field of esports that aren't playing games, so, you know, the whole idea of how like, you know, we have kids who are playing basketball who wanna make it to the NBA, and, you know, we have kids down in the hallway who would love to make it to the professional leagues in esports and make seventy-five, a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year playing online games for a living, which is nice, right? But for most kids, that's not a real dream, you know, it's not really gonna happen to them. But there are other things in the field, there are people who wanted to play games for a living, and now are announcers, or they're designing games, or they're, you know, agents, or they're, I mean, there's so many other things going on there that it's really, it's an amazing field right now. Hundreds of millions, billions of dollars we may even spend in this field, so it's nice to-
Thank you for opening that up to our kids.
Zona?
I think it's wonderful too, I just, I don't want us to, you know, take it too fast.
Yes.
So it gets out of control, I mean, there's a lot, you know, that can be misconstrued, I think, with, with anything new and different. I, I think it's wonderful, I love games myself. Question, are grades monitored the same as they are for other sports?
Yeah, like any activity that we have in the high school, you know, they have to be able to, you know, maintain their grade point average, they have to be passing courses, they can't be absent the day that a match is taking place. The only big difference is that when we practice, our practices are at night, and they're all at home, right? We all jump on our computers at nine o'clock at night, after they've finished their homework. And then they jump on and that's when we practice, so our practice schedule is very different than a regular sports team would be, right? Where we jump to the gym or the field at a certain time. So yeah, so that's one difference. And also, that, that's why we wanted to put the game club at the very top of this packet, not the esports part of it. Because the game club is all about games, so there's lots of board games being played, card games, you know, a lot of board stuff, and some console and computer games too. But so, NES and the CPS gaming clubs that we hoping will be forming here going on, that's pure board games, that's, there's no electronics in those ones. The whole idea of those ones is to get the kids to play face-to-face tabletop games. And then, you know, when they get to high school, then the highs, the school will be more inclined to open up to like the, you know, the online games. But the face-to-face social stuff is still an important part of it, so.
That's good, yeah, thank you, that makes me feel a lot better.
And I'm primarily a board gamer myself, that's also, you know, so yeah.
Thank you.
Mike?
So I, I have a question, I'm, I'm very much in support of this. And I love the, the strategy, the cognitive development, the skill development, the connections to possible careers. But I'm gonna ask the question, the, the elephant in the room question, because we're always talking about how much screen time is detrimental. So, did they talk about that in Irvine, and have they talked about that at the, at the state level?
Yeah, they, I mean, I don't know about the state level, I, I only had one meeting with the state level people, it was a very good meeting, but again, they're more focused right now on getting these leagues up and running. It is only one day a week that the league actually happens, so, you know, so it's normally one day that they're officially playing, but of course, the practices they're on, and, and they'd be on anyways.
Right.
In that way. Well, the one in Irvine, California, Blizzard and TESPA are very much in, in tune with, you know, making sure that screen time is not detrimental to the students, not taken away from, especially high school kids and college kids, which is what TESPA's all focused on, you know, making sure that grade point average in the classes and doing well in school is primary. And that's what we're excited about, the TESPA partnership that we have right now, because they have big time into that type of thing, and I think that's gonna be important. Again, getting back to the game club, that's why we're also trying to make sure all these kids are spending time on Monday or Friday or something, or Saturday playing, you know, tabletop games, there's no screens in front of them at all, and just rolling dice and playing cards and things like that, so. So yeah, but that, that, that is, that is a problem, and that's certainly something that we have to keep an eye on going forward too, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, are you getting a stipend for this? It's a lot of time you're spending.
It's, it's, right now, it's in the, it's in the beginning stages so far, but it will.
We would be looking at a stipend for the work you're doing, good.
I'll be a little bit of a Scrooge. When I do physicals on kids, I ask them how much time they spend playing games, and then I tell them to put it away and read. I suspect that I'm a mossback and a luddite, but it'll be interesting to see if we start to professionalize this, looking at grades, et cetera. I know I had a nephew that lived with us through high school, and he would get up at three in the morning to play World of Warcraft, and I would go nuts about it. So, it'll be interesting to see how this pans out.
It's very easy to get lost within time with these games sometimes, and find yourself starting at like nine-thirty at night, and all of a sudden, it's one in the morning or two in the morning, and you're like, whoops. But yeah, so that's, you know, again, that, that, that's a, that's why I like about grabbing these kids and, you know, ripping them from their house and bringing them in here after school, playing games, where there's an adult saying, okay, that was great, now let's pull out a board game, or let's pull, let's do something different, or let's, you know. You know, so the mix of things, I think, is gonna be key going forward too, not just everything you like.
It'll be interesting to see.
It is, and I grew up with board games, and I, you know, I certainly played video games in South as a kid, and, and growing up, I still play them now, but, you know, my love is still with board games, so I'm hoping I'm gonna pass it on to the kids.
Okay, somebody watching for Pachisi. Thank you very much, Sean.
Thanks, Sean.
Okay, district report card, Mike?
I think we're all right, people can see it over your shoulder.
So my name's Michael Horton, I'm the Director of Curriculum and Assessment for STEM. One of my other responsibilities last few years has been to present kind of a summary report for the previous school year. It's called the Annual District Report Card. This is the third year that we're presenting it in this fashion, where we've taken all the state data, compiled it into one place, and then added a few additional kind of local pieces of information. The goal here is to share it on the website, I'm working on translating the document, and Logan and I will be looking to post this on our district website. So you can easily find it right up in the corner, I'll show you that in a minute. I wanna point out though, that this presentation was March, early March last year, so we're two months earlier this year. And that was intentional for two main reasons. One is a lot of information in here might come in handy as part of this budget process. A lot of the information in here might come in handy as part of the superintendent's search. So, Mr. Kozler and I said, you know what, we're not gonna wait for the state. The state has their own official report card that they put out, they're saying now, late January, early February, we are required to get one form or the other out to parents. There is a right to know, so on, on the inside cover, there's a letter that covers what was outlined last year in terms of parents' rights to know about the credentials of their child's teacher, who's working on a waiver, Tuttle One funding and access. So, sharing information on accountability, this is just taken from the model we had last year. So it is possible that when the state comes out with their official version later this month or early February, that they say, you know, we're also doing this, but we also want you to make sure you include that. So there might be version two, or a second edition, that might have a small tweak here on this second inside page. So I just wanna take you back just real quick. I'm hoping that with all these big agenda items tonight, I'm actually one of the shorter presentations, but you never know. If you go to District Report Card, you go to the district website, mpsk.org, under our district, right here, you can find the annual district report card. So it's very public, you can click the link here, but also should pop up here, and so you can see how this is the old one from twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen, okay? Soon as I work with Logan and we get a translated version up, we'll get that up and running for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, which is what you have in front of you tonight, yes?
Will you leave that one up too?
I can try, I'll probably have to toggle back and forth.
Uh, uh, maybe you can choose two thousand sixteen-seventeen, two thousand seventeen-
Oh, yeah, not, not, yeah, right, for, for the public, absolutely, yeah, I thought you meant like tonight, like on the screens, but, and compare. Okay, got it. So I just want to just kind of explain this process. If you go on the district website and you come down to Department of Education, I do this every year to remind parents and staff that here is this really cool link. If students and families hover here, and you go to school and district data, and you kind of hover over here to school and district information, this really cool map comes up, and you can go to any county, click on it, and then you can drill down to towns within that county, and each of the schools, including the district, pops up, okay? So if you click on a link, all these tabs come up, okay? Just general information, but then there's information on students, and all of these tabs over here, mobility rate, dropout rate, graduation rate. And there's information on your teachers, this is just public information. Data by race, ethnicity, ethnicity, agenda, age groups, evaluation, finance, assessment, accountability, and then trends. You know, district assessment review tool, you actually can kind of look at how we match up to like districts that have similar percentages of special ed students, have similar percentages of EL students, have similar, similar enrollments altogether. Long story short, all this district report card is, is a, is a compilation of all that information in one place, okay? So basically, all I've done is taken all this public information that's available to anyone at any time and put it together in one place. So, that brings you back to this inside cover, table contents, start with enrollment, enrollment breakdown, all four schools included, district percentages compared to the state percentages, EL population, access scores, special education population. In many cases, there's historical data of three to five years, wherever available, I, I included that. Homeschooled students, here's information about teachers and classrooms, the, the degrees of the teachers, teacher assistants, administrators, that's something, that's something we add, that's not in the state report, we get that out of FileMaker from our staffing data. It's just something that Mr. Kozler and I thought, hey, let's put that in there as well, it's interesting. Accountability, we've had the presentation earlier in the fall about MCAS and the new accountability system. Here are the MCAS results by each school, remember NES does not have MCAS results, that's why it begins with N-I-S. High school, and then you get your CPI graphs, you get your trends, you know, every once in a while, try to mix it up from charts to having some line graphs, or pie charts, or bar graphs. Your CPI history at high school ELA, high school math, remember, high school's still on the con- Your CPI history at high school, ELA, high school math, remember, high school is still on the, on the legacy MCAS. That's all changing in the spring. SAT averages, okay, that is something that is included in the state, you can find that for any school district, you can look at state averages, they're included there. Our AP results, okay, this is how the state reports them. We also got a more detailed presentation from Dr. Bucky not that long ago. Now, budget information, our, our pie graphs, you've seen this as part of Mr. Kozler's budget presentation not that long ago. Operating budget should be consistent with what you will see from the town budget information, school committee budget information, per pupil expenditures relative to the state, fellow grants, that should look familiar, that, that pie chart, not that long ago, you saw that breakdown. Just remember, this is from last year, this is not current year, this is from what we received 2017 to 2018, so this is FY18. Student attendance, student discipline information, high school completion, and then this is new, this is something that isn't necessarily included by the state, but future plans of our students, I get this information from the guidance department. So for 2018 graduating class, here's a breakdown of colleges, military work, other unknown, other could include other type of post, post-high school work, internships, travel, follow-up, or other. And then this is fascinating, this is a long list, a page and a half of college and university acceptances. Not where students have decided to go, so this list is extensive, but it's just really neat to see all these great schools and multiple schools that our students are applying to and being accepted at. High school clubs, this is a new one, we didn't have this last year, so if I were to put up the split screen, you know, you'd see this is a new thing from 2017's report. Again, it's from, from last year, so the esports is not there yet, it probably will be in the report next year. And then there are summaries of each of our departments. You may be familiar with the annual town meeting report, annual report for the, for the town, every department submits kind of a annual report. These are some of those excerpts from the tech department, from the facilities department, the athletic department gets its own page. And then the last page is just general contact information, so your, your email is there, so just in case, you know, you want to give a heads up that some people, hey, I'm looking at the District Report Card, I noticed that this is up or this is down. So this is how that they're gaining information, which again, is all public on the district, on the state website, DSE website. We've just compiled it into one location.
Questions?
My card, are our unlicensed teachers all operating under some waivers of some sort?
Uh, as best we can, I don't know if Mr. Kozler wants to add details to that.
I'll take that one, in most cases, yes. Do we have some who are not operating under waivers? Yes, we do, but it's a small percentage, and they tend to be more in the vocational area, where it's very hard to find licensed staff members in vocational.
Is it hard to get them waivers?
Yes, it is, it's surprisingly hard to get waivers. The, the state doesn't want to make it easy, and I understand that, so, but it's, it's a challenge. And every once in a while, we'll make a waiver that's been denied. We have a few who, who had waivers denied. They tend to allow waivers more often in special education, but they're for a time certain. And sometimes we will have somebody working on certification that expected to have certification that can't pass an exam. And then we have to make a decision at the end of, say, this year to, to not offer a contract.
Are all of our administrators licensed or waived there?
All but one.
Yes.
And that's all I'm going to say, we don't talk about specific personnel.
Are you attempting to get a waiver there? I understand not naming people, Mike.
I can add that there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes, mostly by Gene Witt, in terms of directing people to how to obtain licensure.
Yep.
Where they need to take MCAs, how their paths, whether it's a PALS program. You might remember, I, I spoke about Catherine Leahy-Bryne, we brought a program here for the last eighteen months to help teachers get their master's degree, which is kind of kill two birds with one stone. You know, you move up professional, but you also, if you were working on a provisional license, you get your initial, initial license. So there's, there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes, but, you know, we've talked about this before. Recruiting and retaining teachers can be a challenge on Nantucket. And if we didn't do all this work, instead of hiring twenty to thirty new people every year, we'd be hiring, you know, forty to fifty new staff members every year, because they wouldn't be able to get their license, so we're doing, we're doing a lot of work to help people. Title two actually is a fellow grant that you were required to help improve teacher quality and help get them what they need to earn their license.
No, I, I'm comfortable if the steps are being taken to help these people get their licensure. I, I guess I shouldn't have a fear with these percentages, but I remember a while back when these percentages were a lot lower.
Yes.
So they've definitely improved from that.
I think that prior to my arrival, I think Dr. Pellicone worked very hard to improve those rates. And I think we've maintained that approval, but it is challenging. And it's particularly challenging for teachers who come from other states. It, it should be a lot easier to be certified in Massachusetts when you've been certified elsewhere, and it is not. So, that can sometimes be the challenge. I'm not as worried about that lapse in certification, because I know that I have a qualified teacher in front of students. But some of the hardship areas, again, including vocational education, sometimes there aren't a lot of math teachers, for example. And so when your pool is small, you don't have as many choices, so you're trying to get, you have to have somebody in front of the classroom.
So I take it the state is not sympathetic to how difficult it is for us to get people out here?
Well, I think, to be fair to the state, they're trying to make sure that there are certain criteria that have to be met to have a qualified teacher in, in front of students. And so I understand that they have to have certain standards that we, that we have to meet. Do they understand the difference for Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard? I don't think so. It's, you know, when we have to ask for a waiver, we have to show that we have advertised for that position and haven't had a pool of candidates, and that we're not rejecting qualified people for unqualified people. So that's one of the first hoops that they have us jump through, they'll ask specifically for the advertisements, copies of the ads that we have put out, and usually, they will try to honor a waiver, but we've, we've had a few in the past couple of years that they have denied the waiver.
Here's an example of evidence to support the claim. So in 2017, if you look here, here's a report that shows each building eighty-eight point nine percent, eighty-six point seven percent, eighty percent. Where the state rate was around ninety-six point three, so that's just 2017. You can conclude we were in the eighties, okay? So, looking at 2018, these numbers are now up in the nineties. So ninety-seven percent, ninety-four percent, and ninety-six percent, ninety-six, ninety-six point six percent. And you can see the state is relatively around the same, so we really did a nice job between twenty-seven and twenty-eighteen to ensure that teachers were licensed.
Well, Mike, you're not saying that this line of licensed teachers are all highly qualified?
That's the same thing from how the state considered highly qualified.
Is it?
It used to be different.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's licensed in that area of instruction.
And, and really, to answer what I think was your question, we work very hard to try to help teachers receive their licenses and helping them maneuver. I mean, for, for several years, you had to call the certification department, I think there were about two hours a day that they were open at like two o'clock in the afternoon to four, and that was the only time that you might reach somebody. The other thing that I should point out is that the community school now is offering a certain number of the MTEls on island. And that has been a significant help to our staff. Now, for some licensure areas, you still have to go off island to take the exam. But that's, that has been a challenge for our, our teachers as well.
Thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Yep, um, I, you know, in the past, when we talked about our ACT scores, that we could have improved on them, and I don't see them in this report. So I'm just wondering if, if you've got that, that it maybe.
The what scores?
ACT. Um, because you've got the SAT.
Yeah, we haven't put them in, we can.
Um, but I'm just curious as to how we're doing, because I, I don't know if we've increased our offering for that, but I know, it's, um, when I was paying more attention, we didn't, we weren't offering a lot of opportunities for kids to use.
Right, well, not as many kids take it. It, it would be interesting, though, in response to that question, to not only see the average scores, but, but the percentage of students who take it. Because sometimes, without seeing that, you think, well, everybody's taking the SAT, and not everybody's taking the SAT.
And I'd like to see if we've increased the opportunities for kids to test, because I think that that was limited several years ago. Um, the other question I have is, and I don't know that you've got this information, but I'm curious. I always do a, a sort of a quick and dirty count at the end of graduation, when you've got the paper of the high school graduates. And I recognize that when kids are interviewed for that, it's, they, it's not necessarily definite. But I've always come up with the last three years of roughly twenty-five percent of kids who are identified as no plan after high school. And I say no plan like undecided, maybe work, kind, you know, so I'm just wondering, out of all of the impressive acceptances, what's the percentage of students? So it's fifty-six percent of our student body is looking to apply, so fifty-six percent is, is recognized in these, in these acceptances.
So fifty-six plus the two, so you gotta add those together.
Okay.
And then this is high, relative to other school districts, that a lot of students are going directly into work, twenty percent. But unknown is, is two percent. Other are students who defer, students who are traveling, students who enter some other type of internship or program and may have been accepted, but they're not intending to go to college right after high school. So the other covers a variety of kids.
Okay.
And the other question, looking on the state, they do not have ACT, ACT scores, they have SAT, SAT performance. So yes, that is something that we'd have to get locally from the high school guidance department and, and report and add it to it.
And the only other comment I have, and I know we've, we've heard reports on this, but it just, it's shocking to me to see is the twenty-two percent chronically absent in, at the high school.
Mm-hmm.
And I know it's high, and, and you've got a pretty high one too at the elementary school, nineteen percent. So I know it's something that the committee's discussed, but it's, it's, um, it's upsetting to see it that high. Thank you.
Is there one, do you have any?
Okay.
Okay, good enough, Mike, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
The whole year there, it'll be in a row.
Yeah, I think so, I think it's overall, it just says ten percent or more. Oh yeah, it's a lot.
What are they doing, what are they doing?
Okay, budget discussion.
Budget discussion, if you want to lead that.
Well, I, I won't lead it, I think.
Do I have questions?
Yeah, we turn it to the questions.
Where to begin? Double check some figures first, if I may. Mike, you may already know this, Martin may be able to help. We essentially proposed one point nine million in increases that included seven seventy-two roughly in roll forward.
That's correct.
Does that sound right?
That's correct.
With what the town is offering, we are going to be close to six hundred thousand dollars short of what we've proposed.
No, I would say closer to five hundred.
Yeah, well, I did it two different ways and got two different figures.
Yeah.
So, one was five twenty-three, the other was five seventy.
Of our full requests.
Of our full request, I grant you.
That's correct.
All right, with those numbers in mind, I'm just gonna start the ball rolling. We've got to, in my opinion, especially since we have to have published on Friday our proposals, I propose that we propose our full one point nine million. We're gonna have to do some negotiating with the town, we might have to do some negotiating with FinCom. It sounds to me as if the town's already looking at a plausible override. They mentioned it for our island home, I saw mention of a plausible override elsewhere in their documents earlier today when I was looking at them, having to do, I think, with the year-round buses, something like that. So they're looking at proposing an override anyway. And we would be looking then at asking roughly for between five and six hundred thousand to get us up to the one point nine, is that mathematically correct?
That, your math is correct.
Okay, I'm not sure what's incorrect then, since this is my opinion, I, I think we should put the proposal on the table at the full rate that we've asked for, and see where we can go. It's my understanding, correct me again if I'm wrong, that the budget itself does not have to be finalized. We don't have to vote on a final budget until after we meet with FinCom?
Until after the budget hearing, because the purpose of the budget hearing is to receive input from the community. So, at some point, when, when we have presented, we've usually presented what was voted on after the budget hearing to FinCom. And it has, sometimes there's, with that lag, some things change. And hearing Libby tonight say that there's a possibility of some funding, more funding coming, th- this is always a fluid number, you know, e- even in this year's budget, we established the, the budget, and we were able to add several positions afterwards, based on different things that happened between when the budget was passed or developed and passed, and then the beginning of the year. So there, I, I, I would suggest that talk of an override is premature. And I think that, in my opinion, it would be shortsighted to go for an override, in my experience. You go for an override when you're faced with cutting sta- In my experience, you go for an override when you're faced with cutting staff, um, not when you're faced with not being able to add everything that you want. And you may have one shot at an override in five to ten years. And it's better to keep that card in your pocket until you really, really need it. If you play it too soon and the economy goes south and you're looking at cutting positions, you're going to wish you had that, um, opportunity again. And I, I think that with this budget, um, can we get everything we want? No. Can we get very close? Yes, we can get very close. And there will be some things that will happen between now and June that may give more opportunities to pick up some of the things that we don't put into this budget today. And we did that with several positions at the elementary school, several positions at the middle school. And, you know, those opportunities come around. So, um, I wouldn't suggest, I wouldn't recommend to you that you play that card yet. Because the economy's going to roll back a little bit here in the next, I don't know, five years, ten years. And, um, then you won't have that ability to, to do that.
I'm, I'm not recommending it yet.
Okay.
Zone?
Hint, I'm sorry.
I thought you were done.
No, not quite. I mean, another reason that I think we ought to put our full proposal on the table, since it's not final, is that I've got a real problem. And I don't wanna get into a war with the other departments, absolutely not. But revenues are up over seven percent, other departments are up close to eight percent. And it seems to me that offering us four point seven percent is arbitrary.
Except we have a forty-one million dollar intermediate school that the town did not choke on. So I, I would be a little bit cautious about saying four percent, because that's forty-one million. And the town really came through for us. Our superintendent and people did an awful lot of campaigning for that. But I think you have to be, I, from my perspective, I think you have to be a little bit careful of how you approach these budgets, because we, we may hit other times when it becomes necessary to do an override. And also, with an override, you're gonna end up with a paper ballot. And sometimes people can be quite enthusiastic at town meeting. And then, all of a sudden, when they realize what they've really done at town meeting, the paper ballot doesn't come through.
If I could draw your attention at one other thing. In the presentation that Libby had on their general fund projected expenses, it shows that the school department is thirty point four percent of the projected expenses and municipal departments are twenty-eight point nine percent. So while there may have been more growth this year in the municipal side, overall, we're not getting, um, a small piece of the pie. And I would further say that per pupil expenditures for the last year that they came out, which I think was two thousand seventeen, Martin, per pupil expenditures for, um, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts was over fifteen thousand dollars, um, per pupil. Nantucket is getting twenty-two thousand. Now, we know that some of that is because we're an island school and there are certain economies that we don't have in an island school. We can't share, um, special ed collaboratives with other areas, area towns. We don't have an area vocational program. Our athletic program is going to cost more because we're on an island. So we do know that that's going to be more than, um, the average and, and of course, the cost of living and our, and our salaries are, um, good here and the package is good. But, um, I just don't want the community or, or the people here thinking, that the town hasn't been generous in the past. Um, and we need to have that working relationship with the town. When you have a working relationship with a town, you have opportunities that might develop like Libby just alluded to. And I'm sure you picked up on the health insurance piece. They didn't separate that out, um, for us this past year as they said they might. So I, I, I think we need to be careful about how, how hard we push, because we do need that, um, working relationship with the town. And we do need to recognize that the entire town has needs, not just the school department.
So given that, uh, the information that things can change in between the lags, between meetings, hearings, et cetera, what's our recommendation? Are we, or what's your thought, I guess is what I'm looking for, Mike?
I would suggest that we go in with a balanced budget with one point four or five. When we go to FinCom, we will have the opportunity to tell them what is off the table. Every year, they've asked us, and some years, we've pushed that number and other years. And, and I'd be very comfortable in saying, this is what our budget gives us, this is what our budget does not give us. And these are still needs. But if you can imagine the, everybody in town departments doing the same thing we are, it's, you couldn't meet, you couldn't make your budget. You, you can't, um, make the appropriation equal the expenditures if every EIR, um, expense, um, increase request is met. So I, I think that there will be that opportunity to add either, and then I think the, um, select board knows your position and the needs. I think they've heard us and I heard that in Libby's comments tonight.
I totally agree. I totally, if, if we're in a situation where we're talking about cuts, this is not a perfect world, as we know. And I think I was impressed that they met as much as they did, I think, right off the bat.
I would agree, and I, I think we heard that in Libby's presentation tonight. And I think there's still, the door is not closed. There's still opportunity. And, you know, from the experience of, of watching the presentations, I know that you're gonna present, um, all of our needs. You're gonna present the history of, of the growth of our schools. You do a great job in detailing that. And I think it's, it's not a done deal yet, so I'm, I'm comfortable with your recommendation, Mike.
Yeah, I wholeheartedly agree that we shouldn't, shouldn't push the envelope at this point, and I support Mike.
I feel pretty much the same way. I think, you know, laws and sausage you don't wanna see being made. And I would add budgets to that, because our budget, this is a very fluid process. And I've been through about thirty of them, and, uh, it can change. And it, historically, let's say over the thirty budgets, we've generally done very, very well. So I would think that we go in with this. Henry, do you have any comments?
No.
So does that mean? It does mean, doesn't it? That we have to now go through our original proposals and cut that half a million bucks out? Because we have to have published, available to the public.
Friday.
Friday. But the public hearing is about Tuesday.
So if you would like to see my recommendations, I have brought them tonight on a, basically a one-page, um, presentation to try to keep it, um, simple for you. And, um, then we can, we can sort of go from there. Nope, sorry. It's budget, it's, um, put it date modified.
I apologize.
Uh, Martin?
Hello?
Budget changes.
I think files on the flash drive, so.
All right. Here we go. Budget key to changes, please. Okay, and can you, yes, and go to the top of the, um, we're about halfway down, Jen. If you could go to the top of the page, okay? So this is, this is what I would recommend. And I will tell you that, um, this is not perfect for any one of us. You know, we can all find fault with what has been chosen. But I've had conversations, um, with all of the principals and department heads to talk about this. So this is, this is the original, this line. And if you bring that all the way down now for me, Jen? All right, um, that's good. You will see the one point nine, Steve. And then, um, at the time, we thought it was one point four, um, and now it's going to be one point four or five. So that's what we're going to get down to. And now we can go back up, and I'll show you the changes from this original column to today. So instead of four, um, FTEs, kindergarten teaching assistants, I've put in two. We will get there. You know, sometimes you don't get there in, in one year. That was the only change at NES. The change at, um, the intermediate school was to take out the point two for Spanish, which brings us, um, then down here, a change, instead of a one point oh encore, was a point four encore. Keeping the sped teaching assistant, the social worker, um, at the high school, the bilingual teaching assistant, bringing the point four, the new vocational teacher, instead of one point oh, to point four at the, um, high school. Social worker. We did not include the sped administrative assistant. We did maintain the BCBA. We, I did not put in the special ed increase in tuition line, because I feel we have the stabilization fund I can turn to if we need to do that. Under ELL, we don't have the SEI coach in at this time, but we do have, um, the, the ten-month person going to twelve-month and another interpreter there for, um, central office. Now, this person, um, would be serving in, both as ESP interpreter translator, but, but also working with special ed, because that's the area that we have sort of stolen interpreters from to, to, um, try to meet the needs and, you know, there's, there are growing numbers of, of, um, Spanish-speaking children, Portuguese, um, who are special ed.
Mike, just so I understand how this is working, 'cause, 'cause you've just got dashes there.
That's zero.
That means that's, the savings is of the sixty-six thousand for the technology hardware?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, instead of ten thousand for tech professional services, five thousand. Cutting out all of this, um, but we, I know with year-end funds, I can cover that as we have in the past. Right, so that's not going to hurt us. Or it may be that free cash, um, once again, comes into play and we take it out of that instead. So there, there are two possible pockets that could increase our bottom line. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Software down a little bit. This is, this is one that, that hurts, too. Another custodian at NIS, um, but, you know, talking with Diane, can we make that work? We can make it work. Or if there's an opportunity, maybe we get a halftime person, because monies have become available. Then, um, we can, um, we haven't been able to find the network electrician, because, um, we haven't been able to offer candidates enough to make them come. But Diane has been working with different town departments, including talking to the airport and, um, other areas to say, is this something we can go in together on? I think that's a great oper- opportunity for collaboration. And then, um, we are going to, um, do the central registrar, and we can still, I can still pull that offer here if we can find a halftime computer technician. Easier said than done. And then, this is something, um, that we've added since we, um, since we first talked and talked and something that we've already moved forward, a stipend under appendix B or appendix C for a middle school assistant to the athletic director. And we're moving forward that, with that right now. So if you, if you bring that down, and we've been able to decrease the roll forward a little bit, the roll forward is dependent on staff you have today. When you have a teacher leave in November and they're going to be replaced by another teacher, sometimes that roll forward comes down a little bit. Sometimes it goes up, um, but in this case, it's gone down. And so you can see that we can meet that one, um, point four or five with this budget. And then there will be opportunities, I'm sure, to, to take care of some of those other pieces. Anyone can argue this for this. Right, I mean, we could sit here and say, I want the two more kindergarten assistants. And then I'm going to say, so you tell me where that, the cut comes then. Right, so, or, um, any other position that, that was cut. The vocational position at the high school. Those are all, um, they're all debatable and, and they're valid, you know, arguments on, on each side of those. But that is what I would recommend that we, um, put together for Friday, understanding that that may not be where we end up. Because you're going to hear from, um, the pub- public possibly, or we're gonna hear from Libby and know that we have other opportunities to, to cover some of the things that have been cut here.
Assuming, if I may, assuming that this is approximately where we end up when the time comes to go to FinCom, is this sort of the way you would present it to them, showing the things that we wanted, but were unable to put in the budget?
Yeah, so each year, I, and now maybe you could go back to one, last year's presentation. You go out of that? This is the presentation that I made last year. And I'm just going to run through this very quickly. But this year's will be similar to this for both the budget hearing and FinCom. Okay, I start with enrollment to show them what drives our budget. I showed them the twenty-year look to show them, you know, what's happened in, in our community. I give them the ELL population, I give them the special ed population. And then, uh, I, I put in the budget and the projected increase, show them the school operating budget over the years. Again, this will all be rolled forward one more year in, in the new presentation. I will show them the per pupil expenditure. So in fifteen sixteen, twenty-one, two, three, seven, fifteen, five, four, five, for the state. And then I will, next slide. The chapter seventy, history. The chapter seventy, historical comparison. Federal grants, which you've already seen. Budget, next. Budget for each school. Community school appropriation with how much is the appropriation versus how much the participation fees and gifts and donations. Next slide, special education residential, um, tuition slide. And then, I'll, I'll go over the parameters that we were given as an administrative team, next. And then, to your point, to your question, Steve, I'll go over what we will accomplish with this budget. Some of the, um, with some of the additions that we made and, um, the specific increases. And then for the FinCom, I will have a slide of what we did not do in this budget. What remains, um, unbudgeted.
Not for the public hearing?
I don't usually do that at the budget hearing.
I ask because.
I could.
I went, well, I suggest it because if the public wants to comment on the things that we had to cut out, they won't know what they are or were. If we're gonna present the same information to FinCom, why not present it to the public as well?
We can, we can certainly do that. I mean, this is the first year that we've done the budget this way, showing all of the requests. A lot of this has been done, you know, backstage prior to this.
No, and like, I, I'll concede, you asked everyone to ask for everything they really wanted, knowing that we would not necessarily get there. I just think if we're gonna be completely transparent, we should let people know what we thought was important enough to ask for. What happens if we don't get the money?
I can do that. That's the will of the school.
Good idea.
Sure, so that's just a quick.
Any other comments?
No.
Committee discussion votes to be taken. I vote to approve the donation to NHS from Snap-on Tools for the auto tech program in the amount of fourteen thousand nine ninety-three. Is Derek here?
No, but if I could speak to that. I'd like to give credit to, um, um, Mike Girvin and Derek Molson. Mike Girvin made a contact, um, with a gentleman who would like to remain nameless on Nantucket, who was, um, you know, had a connection. And, and he said, I wanna connect you to a program that Snap-on Tools has for schools. And, um, Mike had done some work, you know, on, on a home and, over the summer. And then Derek had met the gentleman and helped, and so he wanted to say thank you and direct us to this. So, um, I, I don't know much about tools. I'm sure my wife is smiling right now. But from what I understand, Snap-on Tools really are an industry standard. And we are very, um, appreciative and fortunate to have, um, this significant, um, you know, donation and.
Pretty awesome.
Yeah, and, and so if you see Michael or you see Derek, um, please, please give them some kudos.
Can we have a motion to accept?
Second.
All in favor?
I, I didn't think we finished the budget thing though. Do we not have to vote on?
Nope.
The changes that Mike just presented for Friday?
You don't have to vote at this point. If, if you wanted to have further dialogue and, you know, go in a different direction.
No, listen, I know I was way outnumbered on that. I just didn't know whether, could it be voting no or abstaining? If we don't have to vote so much, the better.
We'll have a vote probably twenty-two.
Ask though, can you forward us a copy of this?
Sure.
Electronically as soon as possible. Thanks.
Okay, next, a vote to approve the donation to NCS from the Nantucket Community Park and Recreation in the amount of one thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars. Can I have a motion to approve?
So, moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve the donation to NCS from the Community Foundation for Nantucket, NCH Community Health Fund in the amount of thirty-four hundred.
Still so moved.
Second, I'm so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve the NHS culinary trip to Foxborough, Mass. for the state culinary competition, February eleventh and twelfth of this year.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
I, do we not?
What's the menu?
Need a dollar figure for that?
What's the menu?
Yeah, right. Well, I was gonna ask if we wanted to put them on the February meeting because that's a week before they go to competition.
The twenty-second?
Um, no.
Before that.
The before, the February, the first meeting in February?
Oh, February, yes, okay.
As they go. I'm not even gonna try and give you the menu because I would mess it up, but it looks pretty darn good. And it's gonna be at, um, Gillette Stadium this year.
That's amazing.
Hopefully overlooking the, the field.
It'll be fun.
So, is that okay to put that on the agenda for the first week in February?
Yes, I'll put it on the horizon.
Do we, but do we want them, do we want them to come before or after their experience?
Before, if we wanna make sure it's good.
Mike wants to know what the menu is.
Right, but I do wanna hear about their experience, so.
They'll be back.
They'll be still in the game.
Come back.
They'll be still in the game before.
I mean, is that an overnight for them? How do they pay for that? Have they raised the funds?
There is, uh.
Cool.
Where's the money?
Fundraising, and it does say school funds and donation.
Yeah, two hundred and seventy-four for the van and five twenty-two for the hotel.
Well, the amount is five twenty-two, Steve, or those two added together.
Money well spent.
Okay, meeting minutes of December eighteenth. Can we have a motion to approve?
I would like to add a few words, and it will only take a few, to the effect that Dr. Cohen agreed that his request would be for a technology position. I don't know how you're gonna find a point four technology person. Yeah, but I think you did agree that that would be technology rather than VOG. And I just want the minutes to reflect that.
Okay.
Is now a tech position.
We have a motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Transfers and invoices. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Superintendent's report.
Just gonna mention enrollment. You'll see that the, um, enrollment went down slightly from the previous report in December from sixteen seventy-two to, um, sixteen, uh, sixteen sixty-six down to sixteen seventy-two. Just slight changes. I think one fewer at the elementary school, um, three more at the intermediate school, three less at the, um, at CPS and one less at the high school. So, those, that's pretty consistent with what we have seen in the past.
And I'm pretty consistent with my question, uh, reason. Your number's kinda high.
She grew.
I'm growing. I'm still enrolling.
I'm sorry, Dr. Cohen said.
Five withdrawals.
Oh, um, we had some that left behind.
Housing?
Housing jobs.
Is that what Dr. Cohen said? It was a housing issue?
There are also people on extended vacations
Yes.
that are, um, gone for more than fifteen days. And so, when we meet and talk with them, we say, you should be enrolling them in school wherever you're headed. And that we need to withdraw them and then we'll be enrolled and make them.
So, my question would be then, of, of your three, were any that situation? And of your five, were any of that situation? Okay.
May I ask, is that fairly typical?
Very typical.
Can I, can I just mention two, three more students in pre-K? All the more reason they need that extra support down there. In one month, three more students?
Yeah, that's not unusual either though, because you have, um, students reaching age three. And so, they age into the, into the program. So, that's pretty common that that grows.
Three.
Yep.
In one month.
Sorry, quick thing, John, you have four for high school. Was that like the withdrawal in December? Was that like, um, the long extended vacation situation in any of those?
For, for, she was talking about, um, December.
Oh, yes.
Sorry.
Extended vacation transferred to a school in the case.
Okay.
Okay, subcommittee work groups. Are they doing anything? Okay. Student council representative, Henry.
There's not a whole lot going on. The student council did their faculty breakfast Friday before break. Since then, we haven't met, um, concerning anything. So, there's not a whole lot to report on. Lots of kids are hearing back from colleges, which is good. Um, golf club is underway, or Nantucket's golf program rather, and, um, yeah, that's, that's the gist.
Swimming?
Oh, yeah, the, uh, all sports teams are doing pretty well. Um, swim team recently won the Cape Cod Classic, which is, um, just all the swim teams from, swim and dive teams, um, come from the Cape and Islands to Nantucket Pool. And we have a tournament, um, both the boys and the girls.
They got some, got some good records.
Yeah, we did have some.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the record board is changing, isn't it?
Yeah.
Agenda for the next meeting?
Sorry, I put that away. The next meeting is the budget hearing. That'll be on the fifteenth, so it's just a week away. At six o'clock here, um, that has been posted. And, um, I'm gonna add to the horizon, um, the February, let's see. The February culinary. And then, we had to move, um, Kim Horn over at her request to the January twenty-second meeting. She said that would work better with her. And I think we'll, um, I believe that you'll have an MOU, memorandum of understanding with the town regarding recreation for, um, the January twenty-second meeting. So, um, don't know whether you are interested in accepting a Quiz Bowl challenge this year. Are you speaking, are you speaking for the whole school committee or just yourself?
He's the only one that answers any of the questions.
Bring him on.
Dr. Bucky, could you pass that on to Kate and?
We all do.
Oh, it depends on how good you are.
We'll need you, Henry.
Yes, that's a yes.
Okay, I mean, I'll give a final word as the budget goes. Pray for a warm winter. Very little snow and a warm winter. We'll save on oil and everything will be rosy.
So far, so good. Um, can I do a shout-out?
Sure.
Uh, and it's spurred by the fact that I think NIS has just started doing this, 'cause I just saw it on Twitter. But to all the administrators who are putting out weekly, um, memos about what's going on at the schools, thank you first of all for them showing up on Twitter so that I get them. Uh, and I really appreciate seeing what's going on in the schools that way. So, thank you for doing those every week.
Who else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, that's what the tools were for. I wouldn't have been about.